United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. You may be seated. Thank you very much for coming to tonight's meeting. The first item on the agenda are citizen concerns. Is there anyone who would like to approach the board? In order to make your concerns known, you can please state your name and address. If so, hearing none, we will move on to agenda item number three, which is approval of the agenda dated April 26, 2016. Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item four is approval of the minutes of the April 19, 2016, meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the minutes are approved with a vote of four to zero. Item number five is discussion on approval of the claims.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item number six is a good news report, and that is our Veteran Affairs Department. And we have with us Director Danielle Dempster and also several members of the Woodbury County Veterans Affairs Commission. And if they would come forward, you have in your packets that there was a veteran client who our Veterans Affairs Department helped obtain service connection, who was later, unfortunately, diagnosed with terminal cancer. And having assisted with his claims following the diagnosis, eventually, the Woodbury County VA Department worked with his widow after his death. And my understanding was his last wish was to donate in memoriam to the Wounded Warrior Project and support Sulan soldiers. And this is a way he could serve, not only in life, but after his death. And with that, can you tell us what else happened in that, Danielle?
Sure. The reason why I submitted this good news item is because I just wanted an opportunity to say that we help veterans through school, happy times, they're graduating, they're having babies, and they're getting married, you know, all of those things. And those are good, but sometimes you have to do the sad things, too. And it's a privilege to do those things.
Thank you very much. And we also have with us Leon Coster and Vicki DeWitt as well. And if you'd come forward just for a second, we really want to express our appreciation for all that the commission does in support of Director Dempster and the department.
We appreciate that, and definitely, there is good news. And the good news is that the office runs very well, and we have dedicated employees like Danielle who take care of veterans here. And when we keep providing the kind of help that you provide for her and for our office, we can continue to help veterans, and we thank you for that.
Thank you very much, really appreciate it.
If I could, I work for Senator Joni Ernst during the week over at the federal building, and there's many times that Danielle and her office has helped out vets in the local area, and it's really great to have that kind of a resource here. So I just wanted to make mention of that.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would everybody join me in a round of applause for the veterans? Thank you for being here as well. Item six B is the discussion and approval of improvement plans and core value statements. As you may have in front of you, there is a blue book that Karen, James, and Heather Sadoway has spent a week, and even longer, putting together. The board set a goal in long-term planning to have a new vision statement, departmental mission statement, and core value statements, in addition to the improvement plans that you see before you. Each one has the department's mission statement, the elevator speech, which really summarizes the department and what it is they do on a day-to-day basis, and then the goals that they have set forth to improve upon. And so, my hope is that we can receive these and, as supervisors, work with the various departments on implementing those improvement plans. And then there's also some core value statements that we came up with collectively in our long-term planning. And I'll defer to Supervisor Ung to read those for the good of the body.
Core values?
Yes, please.
The core values of Woodbury County are: We respond professionally to the citizens we serve, who can expect respectful, honest, courteous treatment. We provide high-quality services that are efficient, accessible, innovative, and technologically up-to-date. We relate openly to the public with transparency and two-way communication. And we maintain a healthy, productive work environment with clear work goals, appropriate training and supervision, regular performance appraisals, and an appreciative team.
Thank you very much. So with that, the recommendation is to approve the core value statements, to receive these improvement plans. Is there discussion on any of these?
I think this is really good stuff. Of course, Mr. Glazer's got four pages in here, so.
Overachiever.
Overachiever. I would move that we accept these.
There's a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item six C is approval of resolutions honoring three volunteers from the Sulan Center for Active Generations. You have those resolutions in front of you, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. It is appropriate that we didn't mention their names because they don't know who they are, and at the Sulan Center for Active Generations, that will be announced to them. And then I've invited them to come here after they know that they're going to be honored here as well. So thank you for that. Next item on the agenda, item seven is Human Resources. Ed Gilliland, this is item A, approval of the memorandum of personnel transactions.
Move it. Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item seven B, authorize the chairman to sign authorization to initiate the hiring process.
Move it. Second.
Motion and a second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. To authorize Veterans Affairs to begin the hiring process, they're not here, but I'm sure they'll get the message. Item C may have some information and discussion. This is the Nationwide Deferred Compensation Plan. And Ed, if you'd.
Before this gets started.
Yes.
We've been down this road a number of times, and it's been the position of the board in the past that we don't recommend who, anybody buys their deferred compensation plan through.
Okay.
And if we do, we've got to open it up to everybody.
Well, a couple of things, I guess, I would say that's news, that was news to me. First thing, I guess, I would say this plan is put in place here in the county. So my assumption was that at some point in time, someone approved that.
I think, I don't think nationwide, you know, no offense, I don't think it was just nationwide that was approved.
That's the only deferred compensation plan that the county does have.
May I add some insight?
Sure.
Sir, if you'd approach the microphone and give your name.
My name is Matt Ring. I'm the representative for Nationwide here in the state of Iowa. I've been with the company for eight years, three years total here out in the state, and it's my understanding that the history here with Woodbury County, at some point in the past, there were multiple providers. I couldn't tell you how many, but this is what was told to me. And in order to kind of consolidate that program for ease of administration on the county's part, it was decided that the NACO, National Association of Counties, program would be the sole option offered to employees, such as administered by the Nationwide Plan. That's the history that was given to me by the former rep, Chad Christensen.
I think it was made available, the state, the NACO Plan, but I don't know that the county ever acted on.
The county must have some interaction with it, I know it. Go ahead.
Please, go ahead, Jean. Excuse me. Jean Jessen. Actually, the county did actually pass that NACO Nationwide would be the only deferred compensation plan for Woodbury County, and that was after the recommendation from Iowa Association of Counties. Because we had prior to that several employees who had other vendors, and we were getting to the point where they weren't actually going to manage those for us when the people started to retire. And NACO Nationwide will do that for us. So that was the reason why the board did move forward, and it's been a number of years, I would say probably eight or nine as well, that the board actually officially took action on that.
Did we actually approve Nationwide or NACO?
We actually approved Nationwide.
Which is sponsored by NACO and by ISAC as well.
I just want to add a little bit to that, is that there were some regulations, some sort of changes that took place, and a lot of the companies started to opt out for that reason because of the change in the regulation, and that's how the county ended up with Nationwide.
And one of the things with deferred compensation plans in general, the county does have a fiduciary responsibility. That fiduciary responsibility must be taken very, very seriously. It puts burden on the county to ensure that fees are of an appropriate level, that appropriate level of investments are available, and that there's advice available as well, too. And that's a change in law. Pat, can you, do you have recollection of about when that changed? My recollection is this is, we're going back about eight years, right in that timeframe when this was changed. So there's a huge difference in the responsibility that an employer has today versus a decade ago. And that's why I think you saw so many of them go to just one single person, or one single provider like that, one that would provide that fiduciary, or help with that fiduciary responsibility. One of the reasons that we're here today is because, from having reviewed the plan, which I found it very hard to find detail of the plan when I got here, having reviewed the plan, the fees are a little bit high, it's an old-fashioned type of plan, the investment choices really could be broader and more diverse. The other thing to go with this is that there really isn't a lot of advice, and the possibility of having a co-fiduciary, like a Morningstar as a partner, would help relieve liability from the board and give your employees tools that they just don't have currently. And that's kind of the impetus of why we're here today.
If you'd like to add anything, sir, as far as an overview of the program, we did receive quite a few materials.
Yes.
And so, if you wanted to, not only for our good, but also the good of the public, to present maybe a short overview of how this would work, and if you kept it also at the employee level and pretending I'm a county employee and I want to know.
Yes.
So I'll kind of give the, to use the word elevator speech again, as to kind of the benefits of the 457 plan that are offered here in the county, and the reasons why an employee should be encouraged very highly to use that. I would start by saying, the main retirement program that's offered across the state to county employees is I-Pers, right? Everybody puts into the I-Pers, counties match into that, after you put in your time, you're eligible to retire, then you receive a benefit for the rest of your life. It's a great option to have that a lot of Americans across the country don't. The biggest drawback to the I-Pers system, no matter how good it is, is there's no cost of living increase. So if you retire at 55, 60, 65 years old, and I-Pers is your only source of retirement income, you're then going to have to attempt to live the next 20-plus years of your life without ever receiving an increase of your income. So as your groceries and your gas and medical insurance continue to increase year over year, at some point, there's a squeeze, which is why this program is made available. The 457 plan can be thought of simply as the public sector's version of a 401K. Ideally, they operate very similarly. It's a payroll deduction, pre-tax into an account, individual accounts for each employee. They then have discretion over where they choose to invest the money in the plan. The plan currently offers about 40 mutual funds, ranging from low-risk to high-risk, prepackaged portfolios as well, that are kind of either targeted towards an age base or a risk base comprised of stocks and bonds. Once the money goes in, you save it up, tax-deferred, earnings are tax-deferred until you make withdrawals from the plan. An employee is eligible to make those withdrawals the day that they're no longer working here. So you don't necessarily need to be technically retired, right? You could leave the county and go work for the city, and then you're eligible to use the money if you want to. The main benefit and the main differentiator between a 457 and your 401K and your IRA programs, there's no 59 and 1/2 rule. So should somebody retire younger, say 50, they could begin using the money, pay the taxes because it was put in on a pre-tax basis without any additional penalties or fees that are normally assessed by IRA programs or 401K plans. So kind of tying that in as a supplement to your I-Pers, it can also help with the inflationary risks that one has when they save for their future in retirement.
Does Nationwide have its own wealth management program?
One of the attachments that you received is a program that we offer, it's called our Pro Account. So for certain employees who may not want to have to take on the responsibility of managing their own fund, whether it's lack of time, the knowledge, or the desire to do it, they can voluntarily sign up for a program and have their accounts actively managed.
Okay, one more step up. Does Nationwide do their own wealth management, purchasing stocks and bonds and?
On behalf of an employee.
Yeah. I assume you have a large pool of money, Nationwide.
I'm not quite sure I understand the question.
Well, if people are paying into this, Nationwide.
Yes.
Then Nationwide has a lot of money coming in, which they have to manage. So do you have your own wealth management group, or do you farm that out to a broker?
So any of the funds, I would say this, any of the mutual funds in the plan that are titled Nationwide Funds are all sub-advised? Good question.
Do you do this for, I assume, for other counties?
Yep.
Across the state?
Yes.
And so, how many of the counties are you currently exercising this with? And what are your rates as far as the amount of participants percentage-wise? I know that's a couple of questions there.
Yep, good question. So I would say, in my experience, probably a majority of the counties offer a deferred program. The Nationwide NACO Plan is in over half the counties at the moment.
In Iowa?
In Iowa, yes. Average participation across all the cities and counties that we administer across the country, which is over about 8,000, is typically about 30% to 40% of an employee base. And I will mention, this is something I wanted to kind of talk about today, too. Ed mentioned you have over 400 employees here. In the program, you currently only have 22 people actually using it.
And what will change?
What we would like to see is the opportunity to come in and provide more service, more education for employees. Whether that be a one-on-one opportunity where an employee can sit down with me for 10 or 15 minutes out of their day to either enroll into the plan, or down the road, review their investments to make sure they're still on track, they're maybe not taking on too much risk or anything like that. And also to provide group meetings. We have the ability to provide group seminars that talk about a wide variety of retirement planning topics.
So you're telling me there's no change in policy, but you're wanting the opportunity to empower people to make more decisions through the education process? Is that, or?
They're also, you know, and I agree with most of what you said, except the one about the no change in policy. Currently, we are in a somewhat old-fashioned plan. I would say it's high in fees, it's heavily loaded. We're proposing that we move, we shift plans to what they call a Pro Plus, I believe it is.
Yeah, that's accurate.
And the Pro Plus reduces the fees that the employees pay, and does, again, bring Morningstar in as a partner. And Morningstar then is there to help advise and help you figure out which mutual funds are best for you.
Is that information in here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And can you direct me where that's?
It should be in the stapled packet, but it's also the top piece that I attached with the brochure, has the blue strip across the top.
Right here.
That one right there.
So does this show us, I'm sorry, because I'm just getting this wrong.
Yeah, understand.
Does this show us, here's where you were at before tonight, and here's where you could be at in a month's time, should the sport act, and here would be some of the differences?
The Freedom Pro Plus flyer does not show the current arrangements, it just shows the new proposed arrangement. And I would kind of want to readdress what you were saying before and also touch on what Ed just mentioned. The historical policy of the county board was to not allow people, employees, to meet with their retirement providers during work hours. So on one, we would like to see a change in that to give people the opportunity, once, maybe twice a year, to talk with somebody about their retirement plan. And to what Ed was saying, the Freedom Pro Plus option essentially is our new program. What's currently in is kind of an outdated NACO plan that has a higher cost to the employee. The county, based on the assets in the plan and based on the employee, number of employees that you have here, essentially qualifies for an enhancement that would eliminate all fees that are being charged to employees by Nationwide. And it would be, I think, on the second line there, the asset management fee, you can see is zero basis points on the top sheet that you have there, right there.
And one of the things we discussed, is I take a skeptic's view into everything. One of the things that we discussed immediately into this was, well, what does this really mean fees-wise to people? We're talking a net, for just the 22 people that are in the plan, a net savings of $6,700 a year in fees. So we're, you know, in, which I thought, okay, that's only for 22 people. If we gather more people into this plan, which I think is in their financial best interest to have people setting aside money for retirement, you're talking about tens of thousands of dollars in potential savings to the employees themselves, not to the county.
And we currently have an account representative, but employees just can't meet with that person during work hours?
Yeah, that would be me, correct.
Okay.
So the current arrangement, the mutual funds don't charge a sales load or a commission, but there is a fee that's assessed by Nationwide. Depending on the level of the fund that they would pick, there's three tiers of fees, either be 70, 80, or 95 basis points, or 0.7, 0.8, or 0.95%. This Freedom Pro Plus takes that down to zero. So the net savings thereby, eliminating the fee, would be about $7,000 a year. There's a fixed option for people who maybe are averse to market risk and/or getting close to retirement, and they just don't want to have to deal with all the ups and downs of the stocks, they just want to earn interest. Their current fixed account offers a minimum interest guarantee of 3.5%. With this Freedom Pro Plus, it would eliminate the minimum interest guarantee, and the interest rate would drop from 3.5% to 2.5%. The current plan is about $920,000 in assets, only roughly $30,000 of that are in the fixed option. So we're talking a $7,000 savings on the mutual funds versus a loss of interest of about 300 bucks. So that's kind of weighing the two, it's a good benefit.
Other discussion or questions by the board?
Can you hum the Nationwide jingle?
I can, but it might get stuck in your head for a few weeks, and I don't want to be responsible for that.
Yeah, stuck in my head.
So just so we know, the next steps going forward, you are wanting to come back to the board Tuesday, May 24?
Yes.
And you're hoping that that time will give us time to digest and read this?
Yes.
My only request, and even if it was as early as next week, would be, I think it'd be helpful to have kind of a side-by-side of here's what is currently offered, here's what would be offered, and here's what the changes are. I know it's probably embedded all in here, but kind of a one-sheet would help those of us to just see the current and possibly future.
Yep, definitely.
Picture. So even next week for information, Ed? That'd be great.
Present it for information. And, yeah, and that's what we'd like to do, is just make sure we get all the information that you feel you need, and then put it up for a vote or decision on the 24th.
Very good. Any, anything else?
And whatever the county needs to do to allow employees to have access to the representative, Ed, I think we should, I at least think we should move in that direction.
Very good. We can make that part of the action on the 24th and?
And as far as a rollout, we have existing department head meetings that might be a good first step, where we have all the directors together.
As we look at well-being, one of the things that, you know, because we're concerned about our employees' well-being, one of the things that always comes up is, you know, employees' finances and savings and those kind of things, and how those truly impact your overall well-being and your productivity and retention. When you look at this, this is certainly an opportunity to help the employees in a very low-cost, very efficient manner.
And a low cost to us.
And no cost to us, even better.
All right, very good. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number eight is RML Architects, Mike Nezwick, and this is to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement with the low bidder, WA Klinger of Sioux City for demolition and construction of a new entry plaza for the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center. Evening, Mike.
Good evening. Mike Nezwick with RML Architects. We bid, as you know, we opened bids right here at the podium a few weeks back, and we had three bidders at the time. And WA Klinger was low, at 164, 700. And right behind them was Nelson at 169, 224. So the two bids, the two low bids were real close, so I think we're getting what the bids actually are at the time. I know that there was some question at the time, particularly from Mr. Clausen, you know, why was it higher than what the estimate was? Well, we did, after we did the estimate and stuff, we had an estimate for even higher than that, and Kenny and I talked, and we pulled some of those things out. We pulled out the snowmelt system, we pulled out the lowering of the flags and the, some electrical to do, do that. It became, as we delved into the project more and more over there, it became very cumbersome to try to hook into facilities that we needed to provide those systems, even to run electrical way back to, we needed, for that snowmelt system, we needed something that was inaccessible in the back of the building. So we took all the fat out of the project, and what is left is the dirt work, you know, the demolition, the dirt work, the building of the retaining walls, the building of the stairs, the concrete pouring, the ramp, the railings around there, and very little furniture, two concrete table and chairs, or steel table and chairs, and a trash urn. That's all that's up there. And so, you know, I think it's down about as low as it can go. I don't think it would help to rebid the project. One of the things that Larry was asking me is why was it so much higher? I think there are a couple of reasons for that. After I talked to the contractors, it's a small area with a lot of dirt work, and the dirt work is deep, they can't get big equipment down there to compact it, so it's a lot of handwork. You know, a lot of in there with jumpers, trying to, trying to get that, that compacted and everything. And so, I think that's part of it, and the other part of it is, fortunately, in the county and in the city, there are some large construction projects going on. It's fortunate for Sioux City, but unfortunate if you're trying to bid a project because everyone is busy at the time. And so, the general conditions of that being a small area with a lot of work to be done in it, and, you know, the fact that they have to pay for parking downtown and this, that, and the other, a lot of little things there, materials in and out, there's not a lot of room to store stuff on-site, so they have to transport it a lot. I think those were some of the reasons why it went above our estimates.
Getting trucks in and out of there is going to be a nightmare.
That'll be fun, too. The whole project will be a lot of fun, so. So our recommendation is to accept the low bid. You have before you, in the blue file there, Jeremy, the contracts that need to be executed if you guys want to go ahead with the project. I've ran the contracts by Mr. Widman, and he's approved them. The contractor has provided you with his bonding and his certificates of insurance in those also. And so, I think that everything's ready to go if you guys are ready to go forward with it, so.
Questions or discussion?
When would this start?
The way that we wrote the specification, because it takes out the main entrance to the jail and the LAC Center, we told them from start to finish, this has got to be done in six weeks. And we gave them a slide, it's a tough, tight time schedule.
That took the price up.
Took it up, too, a little bit, but it's a, it's a sliding six weeks, as long as they're done by September 1st, I believe. And so, so they can start whenever they want, but the ending date has to happen before September 1st. Kenny didn't want it to go into the fall, and so it's a six-week timeframe, but it's a sliding timeframe at the contractor's option. I have not talked to the contractor to see when he would like to schedule. I have not talked to the contractor to see when he would like to schedule it in, but, so I don't know exactly, Mr. Monson, what, when, when they're going to get started, but sometime this summer.
Other questions or discussion?
Klinger, is that clear?
WA Klinger, yes.
He just took another big job.
Yeah.
No, I had a short conversation with Mike, and I don't like it, but I'm going to have to accept it if we want to get the job.
Yeah. I don't know what options we have, guys. I mean, you could make it smaller, but if you put anything too much smaller on that building, it's not going to look right.
You mean one set of steps on a little sidewalk?
There is only one set of steps.
I mean a little set of steps.
Yeah, little, yeah, four foot wide, yeah, so.
Well, I'd move to authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between owner and contractor, WA Klinger, for the amount of $164,700.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it. And item number nine is Building Services, Kenny Schmitz. And item A is Courthouse Southeast Windows Emergency Repair Contract. Kenny?
The first item, item A is to approve a contract with Cannon Moss Brigger Architects. This would do the design work to prepare the, any construction necessary with courtroom 203 and the emergency repair thereof. It would also obligate the county to, to work with a contractor and have CMBA also work in conjunction with that contractor to do the, do the necessary repairs and the necessary cost estimates associated with that. We have already started touching base with some contractors. We haven't really got any pricing back, other than pricing to remove, repair, and reinstall the stained glass windows themselves. Now, that doesn't include any framing on the courthouse or any structural repair items, painting, sandblasting, setup of scaffolding, lead paint testing, or any of those items, which we're trying to quickly get pricing on.
So this is with Cannon Moss Brigger for the extent of the project?
Yes.
I would move it?
Motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
We don't have any numbers at all. Kenny and I talked yesterday. Where are we going to come up? This has to be done, but where's the money going to come from, Danny?
The money for this item A and item B will come from our CIP project. We did budget 185,000 this current year, and we have 450,000 budgeted next year, because it'll probably get entailed a lot more than just what we're talking about here.
So that'll be part of the bond issue?
Yes, yes.
Dennis, don't sit down yet, please.
Just stand there all night.
When you said that'll be part of the bond issue, you're talking about the CIP ultimate borrow?
Yes. The one we're going to do this year, and also the one potentially next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Discussion? Or motion and a second, hearing no, further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 9B is a discussion on approval of proposal and acceptance agreement with Bogan Reef Studios Incorporated.
Item B, yes, is for Bogan Reef Studios. This would be for the removal and the repair of 15 upper windows and 13 lower windows. It would repair the, the letting and, and improve the letting in those windows and restore those to their original glory. There's two items associated. The, the first proposal is to remove the 15 top stained glass windows in the amount of $45,000. The second item is to remove the 13 bottom stained glass windows for $17,550. And so the total for those two would be $62,550. That is just for the removal, the repair, and the installation. It does not include, and we have not gotten yet pricing, on setting up scaffolding or lifts, or what might be required in conjunction with that, so there will be some costs there. But we didn't think it was prudent to put that in Bogan Reef's costs, and so their costs just reflect the window repairs themselves.
And this is just one courtroom?
This is just one courtroom, yes. Again, we don't believe the others are going to incur the, the work or the costs that this, this courtroom 203 has. They will incur some, but we don't, don't see the cost being quite as high.
Kenny, I don't see a bond included in the materials here. Have you got a bond from them on this?
I don't yet, Joshua. We just received this, and I apologize for not getting it to you, too much beforehand to review further, but we passed it along as quickly as we got it, and I wanted to get it before the board. So what I might add is with, with the board approving this, that you're, you're going to review the agreement and make any changes that we, the county, might deem necessary.
So how about this? Board would approve the agreement with Bogan Reef Studios after, tonight, pending Joshua's review and a bond being provided.
Yeah, we can't sign the contract unless we have a bond in place, and that's per code on any project over 25,000. But there could be a motion to authorize the chairman to sign, unless we do have that bond from them.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item, Kenny, sorry, before we go to item 10, while we have you here, quick question, elevators, do you know how we're doing?
I've got a progress meeting tomorrow, but the last I checked, which was about a week ago, things were on track. With the, with the timeline they provided us, is approximately six weeks, six to eight weeks per elevator, and they were on track at that time.
Thank you.
I have a little...
And I did see one of the installers today, and he didn't indicate anything to me that, that anything drastic had come up, so.
Just a little caveat here. Friday, there will be 103 third graders coming from Lead School, and we are not going to the eighth floor.
That's a good idea.
All right, very good. Thank you, Kenny. Item 10A is the approval of a resolution adopting a levying special assessment in Little Sioux Inter County Drainage District of Manona, Woodbury, and Harrison Counties, Iowa. The motion is there, second?
We're supposed to be acting as the Woodbury County Board on this? The way it is?
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 10B is approval of a resolution adopting a levying special assessment in the McCandless Inter County Drainage District of Manona and Woodbury Counties, Iowa.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 10C, approval of resolution adopting a levying special assessment in the Sandhill-Lakeport Inter County Drainage District of Manona and Woodbury County, Iowa.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second is their discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 10D, approval of a resolution adopting a levying special assessment in the Woodbury-Manona Lateral to Drainage District of Woodbury County, Iowa.
Move it.
Oh, second it is, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 11 is Rural Economic Development with David Gleiser, and his item is going to be an update, trying to stretch this out, update on the USDA RBDG grant. And he's still allowed for a long pause. No, that's okay.
David Gleiser, Rural Economic Development Director. So just wanted to basically provide the board with an update on the status of the USDA Rural Business Development Grant. We've taken action to apply for the grant, we've taken action to utilize Simco to write the grant for us, and about three days before we left for Washington DC, I got a phone call from the USDA Regional Office saying that they've encountered an issue with our application. Simco was working on our grant application, sent in a couple of questions to the Regional Office. The Regional Office kicked those questions up to the State Office, the State Office pushed them over to the National Office. The National Office sent the response back saying that our project was an ineligible project for this grant opportunity. Back in December, the Regional and the State Office provided me preliminary feedback saying that, based upon their analysis of our project and the funding opportunity, that it, that it would work. They provided some preliminary guidance in how to structure the language in the application, but unfortunately, something was overlooked, and the National Office has basically told them that comprehensive area-wide planning is not an eligible project. When you look at the section in the regulation where it describes the eligible projects, what we're trying to accomplish is clearly articulated in there. But then in the ineligible section, it says comprehensive area-wide planning is ineligible. I've gotten some suggestions from the State and Regional Office on changing the description of our project, and it's sort of just an issue of semantics, but to be quite honest with you, I don't feel comfortable changing the name of the project from a development project or a regional economic development project, because of the language in our resolution that every city has passed says for comprehensive area, for comprehensive planning services. There is a difference between a development plan, an economic development plan, and a comprehensive plan. And so, I have not received, when we were in Washington DC, the three supervisors and myself, we talked to the deputy under, the secretary, Ms. Lillian Salerno, and she was going to provide some feedback based off of their office's analysis on this issue. I haven't received anything yet.
So you're looking for some direction from the board as to how to proceed? Your staff recommendation would be to not change the terminology to fit the program, because that's not what the city's resolutions passed. Is there a discussion or guidance that the board would like to give?
I agree with that.
And just to add to what David said, there is legal significance to, you're right that that's not the same thing. I mean, the comprehensive plan that's formally adopted by the city, by a city, has legal significance as far as the regulations that they use, so it is more than just an issue of semantics.
Let's hope we get wisdom from USDA lady.
Well, I think the other thing that's important to note is, there's $110,000 that we're looking at from local option sales tax. Statewide, for this grant funding, there was $32,000 that we would be even eligible for, so I don't see it as a game changer, as far as this board moving forward. And I think a point that you mentioned, if I can bring up, if they are looking as a prerequisite for a long-term comprehensive plan, and we were to somehow retroactively change it to be something other than that, simply for the purposes of being eligible for these monies, that may prohibit us from applying for something else for which you do actually need a long-term comprehensive plan. So I think it's wise, and I, it sounds like the consensus of the board for which you do not need a motion, and, and any other comments or thoughts?
So I guess, so I need to, you know, have a discussion with Simco and figure out, I mean, if there's any, if we've incurred any costs for them doing the legwork on this grant so far, or not, that I don't know. But I just wanted to make you folks aware before I do anything.
Your last hope is USDA, Cal?
Yeah, and, you know, it was, when we had those discussions at the National Office, she said that it wasn't their first time that they had encountered an issue on this particular grant program, and this year is the first year that they've combined the Rural Business Opportunity Grant with the Rural Business Development Grant. And so they're clearly experiencing some, some, you know, issues.
Well, you can't get them if you don't try.
Yeah, I, it's just unfortunate. I was really excited about at least being able to apply, so.
What's interesting is, I think everyone we talked to agreed that it was an issue of semantics.
Well, thank you for your work on that. Thank you for keeping the board informed, and keep your head...
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, item number 12, Board Administration with Dennis Butler. Item A is discussion and action on the proposed FY 2016 Budget Amendment Number One to be held May 24, 2016 at 4:45 PM. Dennis?
Okay, this is our annual budget number one amendment. I have listed by department division and line item, of every item we're increasing, also where the revenue is coming from. On the last page of the first memo, I showed how much the total is. We'll amend our budget for $6,392,549. The revenue will be offset, and I've listed those. So just to make it real short, because we can go in detail if you want, we can also go in detail later, too, because you have the public hearing where you come back and cut any of this you desire. So in our service areas, public safety's going up, 516,000. Physical health, social service, 94,000. County services, mental health, 4,100. Roads and transportation, 1,113. Environmental education, 516,000. Government services, 6,800. Administration, 198,000. And capital projects, 3,942,000. The big increases basically are roads, capital projects, and basically in the sheriff's office. A lot of these expenses here, we have no control of, basically, except CIP projects, and those have all been approved previously by the board, also by the five-year plan and secondary roads. The increases are due to a large increase in low-cost sales tax, also a capital loan note, and the 10 cents a gallon tax. So these are revenues that were not budgeted, we are budgeting now. You can see on the bottom side where the revenues come from, the big concern is cash reserves. You can see I broke that down by fund, how much comes out of General Basic, General Sup, and the other one to think about is Real Basic. The others are offset with revenues within the fund. So reserves, we're using 463,000, split up to eight funds. The big one obviously is the General Basic, 292,000. That's kind of a summary. If you need detail, we can go through it line by line item, or you can look at it for the next three weeks before our public hearing. If there's any questions in between, we can answer them also.
Is there discussion or questions?
So, Public Safety, Legal Services, is that the sheriff and the county attorney?
That's the sheriff, basically, with our contracts that were settled through arbitration after the budget is done. The Uniform Patrol, basically, the 71,000 errors, when we moved the court security over, the gentleman came over here and we filled that over there with a person. The other part is the Drug Task Force, HIDTT grant, those are grants, and that's about it. And also the correctional facility, that involves the drugs, medical assistance, that.
Okay, so...
But the sheriff did come up with revenues above and beyond what's budgeted, we used our budget for carryovers, so that is an addition, so there was any cash reserves used at that point.
Physical Health and Social Services?
That would be, in this case here, that'd be the allocation of district health to cover the LTD cost in a long-term life. The reason those almost doubled, in some cases I think a little more, is because the final numbers came in after the budget was done. So you'll see a long list of... So you'll see a long list of, and every department has payroll, of LTD increases and county life insurance.
How about county services, mental health?
Okay, that's just to get the LTD in and a life insurance for individuals there.
And the road and transportation would be the 10 cents?
That's gravel, cement, things like that, and projects that they got the additional 10 cents and local option sales tax.
Above what the budget was?
Yes.
Okay, I get it.
Other discussion on the budget amendment?
Yeah, my biggest concern is just the cash reserves.
Correct. And, you know, just because we're increasing doesn't necessarily mean they're going to spend it all. If they don't spend it all, they'll cut back on using the cash reserves also.
Right, but use the sheriff for an example. He has no control over.
No.
Hospitalizations.
No, he does not.
So it could be more.
Potentially could be, but he'll find ways to make it work. Right, Dave?
Is that a salary cut or something? Is that where we're going to get that?
No. So basically, all you're doing is saying, tonight, you're just saying to have the public hearing May 24th.
And there's approximately three marks of discussion.
Right.
That can be had on particulars.
Correct.
And is there more discussion? Questions, thoughts, comments?
I'd move we place the hearing on May 24th, 4:45.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries. Public hearing is set at such, on May 24, 2016 at 4:45, four to zero.
Thank you.
Item B, Dennis, is the local option sales tax update. You gave ahead of time to the Rural Economic Development Committee, and we'll do so tonight as well. So go ahead, thank you.
Okay, on this, we're trying to make a summary here. So I'll show what we have here. For fiscal year 2016, there are currently 692,320 unobligated funds available in the local option sales tax fund. First, we'll refer to as LOST. If none of these unobligated funds are spent or obligated, they will be carried forward to the next fiscal year 2017, starting July 1, 2016. With that carried forward and some funds that we aren't spending in the next year, that could grow to 703,000 unallocated. It should remember that this number is one-time money. So if we do spend the money through economic development or any other item, you get one shot at it. Now, if you don't spend it, it carries, keeps carrying forward to the next year. For fiscal year 2017, 531,715 is being used for property tax relief, and 69,102 is being used for non-mandated expenses. For a total obligation of 600,817. The one thing I do want to say about non-mandated, that includes SLAN initiative, also includes two other agencies where they use this money for leverage, which generates a lot of money. Simcoe is a fine example. Park gave that this afternoon to Economic Development. Between five counties, I believe, what our share and their share generates almost 980,000. So it does show, that's a good way to use local option sales tax to leverage that kind of money. The total projected revenue for LOST money is 450,000 next year, 75,000 for MERD, and 49,122 for loan payments. For a total of 574,122. You look at it and say, hey, we're spending more than we're taking in. But in the tax release, I have, there are one-time shots this year that we're doing for next year, such as soil conservation, 41,000. That was a one-time to get them started up to replace the other individual. If you go back to the second and third sheet, kind of gives you a recap of all the different items we've actually obligated to, source of revenues, also for the current year and also for next fiscal year. So if there's any questions there, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So essentially, if I get, we kind of did this earlier, did you get the big picture? We've got approximately $700,000 of one-time funds that could be utilized over the next couple of years.
Correct.
And the board has taken what is normally coming in the local option sales tax, and the majority of the money has been spent the last two years in mitigating and lowering the tax levies.
Correct.
And this is only 20% of the local option sales tax we're talking about here.
Correct. 20% goes to this fund here. 80% goes to tax relief for the rural people. Out of rural basic levy where we actually levy the money for secondary roads, they cannot levy money. That amounts about 2,400,000, of which 2 million is used for regular CIP projects. 400,000 we're using for property tax relief on the five-year plan for the bridge replacement.
And we'll probably have a discussion of this later on, but one of the things that we wanted to apprise the Rural Economic Development Committee of is that local option sales tax primarily after that 20% delineation is for rural economic development. And so I wanted to give people a realistic update of what is out there and could possibly be used as program funding, long-term plans, CDC to development, and so on. Questions or discussion on this item?
But we use a lot of that money in David's department, funding that department, plan and zoning.
Yes, ever since the Economic Development Department came into existence, we have used local option sales tax funds to fund that department, which is a perfect way to use the money to create economic development, have a department there to do it.
And these funds, these aren't subtracted from your totals?
Yes. When you go to your obligations, general basic, yes. General basic here for this fiscal year is 200,720. That's part of the obligated funds. For next year, it's 183,697. I have put in our transfers up above in '16, and you'll notice transfers down below. There's five different transfers. Those are actually tax reductions using local option sales tax.
And one of the last things on this that I want to mention is we can't keep doing this in perpetuity, lowering the tax levies using local option sales tax to such a degree. But for the fact that CF is going to be coming online in two or three years, that to me provides the bridge to be able to continue to provide that property tax relief.
Right. And one item that we did use for the next fiscal year is 100,000. Help reduce even further the bridge replacement tax. That's next year. We have one more year, '17, '18, which the board can opt to do this again or not. But after that, '18, '19, it ends. Then it's another discussion there with the rural people.
Very good. Any other questions, thoughts? Thank you very much, Dennis.
Thank you.
Item 13 is the county auditor, Patrick Gill. Consideration and approval of a parking plan.
Board members, I just want to give you a background on the 30 parking spots that are in the area of the Woodbury County Courthouse, Law Enforcement Center, and the Building Services Facility. Prior to this, there really never has been a plan that was adopted from chairperson to chairperson. Sometimes positions changed and people had different permission to park in different places. So earlier this year, I brought a resolution to the board that designated, that asked me to, directed me to come to you with a parking plan. And that resolution also stated that that would be done every year after the budget cycle prior to the July 1 fiscal year. So, but it is something that I would submit to you, and it is up to the board of supervisors to approve that plan. To put it in place that way, it does weigh with all arguments as far as who's parking where. The 30 parking spots, there are two located right in the footprint behind the, of the courthouse itself, where the chairperson usually parks it. Both of them are designated for a board of supervisors' use. The transportation folks at the jail use it to bring in prisoners for court appearances and plus deliveries. Those two, they are signed for the board of supervisors, and they'll remain that way under this plan. Over behind the law enforcement center, to the north of the law enforcement center, you have, on the north side, there are 12 spots that, two of those were lost temporarily for a long period of time due to remediation plan to get rid of odor. So there are essentially 10 spots there. The sheriff's department has five of those, and the others will be designated for the judiciary. We've had, we're moving two folks from behind the law enforcement center, the Supreme Court Justice and an associate district court judge over to those positions there. And three of them will be provided for senior judges. That's going to be a change. Then I'll get to the, where the rest of those district court judges are moving to. But that has been, the issue is that when, there hasn't been enough room. When those folks show up, they park in places where there are openings, and that has caused some issues to begin with. This was done, and we took in, we took this to the Policy Review Committee. We talked to the sheriff and PJ Jennings, who talked with the district court clerk, and came up with a plan as far as what we're going to do to do that. But, so the five of them have been assigned to the sheriff's department. Those will remain the same. And then on the south side of that north side parking lot, you have three that are associate district court judges park parallel to the building there. Four of them are for the board of supervisors' use. One of them will be for the planning and zoning, and one for the budget analysts. And then up on the other side, behind the law enforcement center, you have seven spots that are there. Three of them are for Building Services. One will be for the treasurer, who is moving out of the parking ramp. One for Juvenile Court Services Director. And then one is a loading zone for the Building Services. It's right behind an entry, the way to the building there. And then also a sheriff's vehicle will be parked in one of those seven spots. Okay? And then over in the Lurigus Parking Facility, the county will lease 14 spots over there. Six of them will be for the district court judges. And then for the auditor, the county attorney, human resources director, rural economic development director, the county-owned election vehicles, and two for Building Services. That they put equipment that can't be left outside. And that's the plan that is being submitted to you.
Is there discussion, questions?
I was happy with the process. Thank you, Mr. Gill, for your work on this. Took a lot of the fear and any contention that might have existed out of it, I think. And part of the impetus was, you know, safety oriented. Were able to get the judiciary under a parking ramp. And certainly thank Mr. Clayton for his taking one for the team and being willing to park outside of the ramp to make this more possible.
I just want to comment, I left out the part about the enforcement of the plan. The way it has always been in the past is Building Services gets those phone calls, and Kenny agreed to continue to do that. But if any vehicle needs towing, he will ask for the assistance of the sheriff's department to do that.
Very good. Any other discussion, questions?
Move approval of the parking plan.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. And the motion carries four to zero. Thank you very much, everyone who was involved and for all your work and for not making me in charge of it. Item 14, Secondary Roads. Mark Nara, Ben Kuzler. 14A is consideration of a tile crossing agreement in the highway right-of-way. Evening, Ben.
How are you? So I brought Corey Gasson with us, the, uh, YI.
Yeah.
Any questions on the tile crossing?
Any questions on the tile crossing?
No questions on the tile crossing.
There are no questions on the tile crossing.
Move to approve the underground tile line agreement right-of-way.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries four to zero. Item 14B is to receive and consider the award of quotations for a new motor grader.
I think there were some sheets at the backup, but Corey's got some extra ones here he's going to hand out to you. We had two bids. And we were trading in a 2001 John Deere 770CH.
There you go.
Our first bid is from Murphy Tractor and Equipment Company of Sioux City. And they are quoting a John Deere 772G motor grader with a seven-year warranty for 7,500 hours. Their equipment total is 308,600. And they're allowing a $51,000 trade-in for a net total bid of 257,600. 257,600. The next bidder is Ziggler Cat, also of Sioux City. Okay, they are bidding a M-Series 3 motor grader. New machine with new and mounted snow wing, complete with new controls. They have a net bid of 284,913 with a trade-in allowance of $25,000 for a net bid of 259,913. 259,913.
Pretty close.
Are these the same piece of equipment?
You know, I just opened them up, to be honest with you, Mark. So Mark's going to have to review these specifications. They are not the same.
Do we have somebody who'd like to approach the board?
You have to come up here.
If you'll state your name and address or their.
Brent Truckee, Ziggler Caterpillar here in Sioux City, Iowa. The first bid he bid was a 772 for the John Deere. That was an alternative bid that Mark had asked for, for the all-wheel drive. There should be a 770 bid along with there. The first bid that he read for me is my tandem machine, which is not all-wheel drive. I also included an all-wheel drive bid on mine as well.
So that should be true of Ziggler too?
Yes.
Okay, so the first bid was a 772G motor, and you, that was an alternative, you say?
Yeah, Mark asked for an alternative bid.
Okay, and the other is a John Deere 770G motor grader. He has a bid on that equipment for 277,800 with a trade-in of $51,000 for a net total of 226,000, 226,800. So that would be a net of 226,800. Again, when we're done with these bids, we're going to ask that these go back to the county engineer for his review with the alternatives.
I'd move to refer these to the county engineer for.
That the last bid.
Add one more. What, it's also from Ziggler, but it's an alternative bid. What, it's also from Ziegler, but it's an alternative bid. And that's for an all-wheel drive machine. That has a net bid of 316,108. $316,108. And that has a trade-in of $25,000. So his net bid with trade-in is $291,108. They do have additional equipment, a push blade for $8,275 and a front-mounted scare fire for $4,725. Again, these are not straightforward bids. Equipment is a little bit different, so then I asked that the board refer that to the county engineer to review all the bids and come back.
Move to have the county engineer review the bids and come back with a recommendation.
Second, that is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion carries four to zero.
Next item is, I'm happy to report that we're going to ask you to consider the bid for the PC paving project down at Port Neal Circle. Had a little discussion with the RISE people grant and they're very heavy on TSB and that's targeted at small business and they were a little hesitant to take our low bid because Western Iowa is kind of a, forgive the comment, a graveyard for small business. And they do require a large documentation for that. So after reviewing all the documents, they were concurrence that it's in the best interest to allow the bid. And I think you have copies of those bid tabs? You should have a...
And that's for Godverson?
That's for Godverson, yes.
And that's the recommendation?
And that was for $1,443,548.84. $1,443,548.84 and that was well below our estimate and well below the next bid also.
Move it.
Second.
A motion and a second is their discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion carries four to zero.
Moving forward with contracts on that quite quickly because construction is set to start on June 6th.
Very good. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you.
Will now recess the Board of Supervisors' meeting and convene the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting. Item 15, approval of the minutes of the April 19, 2016 meeting. I'd move it if I can get a second.
Say I'll move it.
We have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
The third.
One of those.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And the motion carries four to zero. Will adjourn the Wolf Creek Drainage District Trustees Meeting and continue the Board of Supervisors' meeting. Item 16 is information on a working group describing the May 24, 2016 County Government Day. I put in some copious notes and so I won't read them in detail. But May 24th is the day that we had agreed upon to highlight what Woodbury County does for safe and secure effective services. Essentially, we talked about having four aspects. One would be historic tours that would run from 11 to 2. And we talked about having stations so that, and Mark, for example, grading people and doing the first part of that tour and having some folks up on the second floor and then the eighth floor so that they could kind of go from stations. That'd be one aspect of the day. The second would be featuring core services of departments and that could be as simple as tables or booths and having literature and a description of what it is each department does in order to meet the core services for public safety or to, you know, support quality of life or economic development. David Gleiser just handed me this that he was working on. I think it looks pretty cool. It's the kind of thing that we want to be able to feature. And so every department right now has an updated mission statement, an elevator speech in which representative of the department can state, here's what it is that we do and also maybe provide better access to services as well. I've been looking to see if we could have an educational partner in a local government class, but the hour is waning as we get toward the end of the year. And so what we may be doing is inviting classes akin to what Mark has said, he's having with his third graders coming through so that they can be educated on what it is all of our folks do to contribute, which I think is pretty amazing. And so that would be one aspect of it. Another would be having a looped video. We have the NACO video and we're looking at our own capabilities. And that could be a third station, maybe the old Board of Supervisors' room where that video could be looped and we could talk a little bit about what the board does. And then finally, an aspect of refreshments potentially down here. And so there's kind of four stations that we're looking at. At the same time, fortuitously, Lisa McNeil walked in us and she had some very good suggestions right off the cuff, like opening up one of the courtrooms, having a county attorney, judge, teen court, veterans court, mental health court, all those aspects and give a 10-minute overview as well, which might be a cool part of the day. So the idea is, some people may have 15 or 20 minutes in which they can only do one thing and some people may have an hour, an hour and a half, which they could maybe do all four things. But we'd advertise for it and that's kind of an overview. So with that, I just wanted to throw that out there. If you have ideas, if there's things that you don't like about it, do like, et cetera.
Are we going to, is there a dollar figure attached to this?
Not yet. That's where I was looking to you.
I...
To see how much we could...
I don't want a shock. Let's put it that way.
I really like the idea of having some high school students. In terms of the tour, I'd like to train, get Jim Jong and Storm in here and train maybe five or six students on what they would talk about, about the courthouse and just stand back and watch. That would be such a learning experience. I think it'd be very good.
I'm kicking myself a little bit that, you know, prior planning, this was in three months before, you know, and it's tough. But if we could get some to do it or if we can just have them to come down and say, look at some of this, that'd be great. As far as the budget, we did talk a little bit about having food or if somebody needs to design a short video for professional services. We didn't come up with a dollar figure, but we thought if we're going to do something, it should be nice enough but yet balanced with moderation.
If the chairman's wife would make egg rolls, that would be free to the county.
Unfortunately, the chairman would like to remain married, so that request will not be able to go forward. But I'll ask.
Okay.
Big mistake.
So I would anticipate, let's say in the next week or so, we probably do need to build some sort of small budget perhaps out of gaming revenue for, you know, $1,500, $2,000, something like that. I'm looking to see the sticker shock. So...
You seen it?
Okay. So that, that's kind of where that's at and...
I like the rotating idea, the different stations, but should probably be confined to the first two floors, I would.
Yeah.
I would say.
Rather than having people come down here and...
Going up the stairs or down the elevator and...
Yeah, the eighth floor may be an issue with one elevator, but we'll wing it.
All right, well, that sounds good. We'll move forward and I'll look to see if I can disseminate some guidance because obviously our department heads and elected officials will want a little bit of time to probably prepare and we'll let them know.
I think, sorry, I think if we wanted to have someone from the historical preservation side give a video or a presentation on the courthouse, that'd be great. But like a set time, you know, during the event, it could be here at 12:30 or in a certain room at such time. So it's easier for people to plan to be, you know, they could all congregate there after the tours or before the tours.
Kind of like a 20, 24-minute deal at the...
Right. Or even if it was shorter, you know, a couple of them.
Okay. That sounds good.
And we could break out all of our awards and plaques that are sitting behind pillows and such in the, in the board office and, you know, put them up where the presenter is or...
That sounds good. We also have pillows that we could give away.
Yes.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll go to rural meetings for the future. Just want to let you know, I'm reaching out. I haven't made contact, but I'm reaching out to, I know we have Odo and Sloan and Smithlin and some in the future and like to start getting those scheduled and perhaps every month. And the last one in Correctionville was very good, over a dozen department heads and elected officials. Thought it was a very good give and take and fairly balanced. So know that that'll be coming and also scheduling labor management quarterly meetings between Ed and myself and representatives, just to hear no bargaining issues or reopening of any contracts, but just to hear what kind of issues are there and mitigate any, anything that can be mitigated. So with that, reports on committee meetings.
I had one last Tuesday evening. It was the Chamber Key Executive Welcome. There were 65 new executive people that were at that dinner, probably 300 people in the room. I sponsored Michelle Bostonalis, the new executive director of Simcoe. She was very nice, well-received, met a lot of people. It was good.
Very good. Other committee meetings. This morning, we had TSI Steering Committee and a presentation from Seaboard Triumph, Mark Porter, the COO. And that's an amazing 250 acres that are coming on site, second-largest pork-producing plant, and the technology is unbelievable. I think it's going to be the most technologically up-to-date robotic belly opening and backbone split saws, loin pullers. I mean, you take this hog through and it comes out on the other side. It's amazing.
As a pork chop.
Right. And packaged, and you know where it's going? China or Japan, not frozen because of vacuum technology and even some of the, I mean, the whole thing is kind of fascinating and I wasn't sure if I wanted to eat bacon afterwards right away or, you know, what I wanted to do, but I was just, it's going to be a great 850,000 square foot facility. And they're also a very good partner, NAIA sponsor, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, made a $100,000 donation to the school system right off the bat. So this is an exciting, exciting thing. And then just gave us an update on Dallas service starts May 5th. And that's exciting, workforce solutions and development. That's going to be a good thing as well.
One item, back to Seaboard. Their intent is to keep every hog happy from the time they enter the plant until they are, what did he say? Processed. Because if they are happy, it tastes better.
Do they have classical music playing and...
I've got a bridge for you too.
Well, basically, they cut down the walk time. Most of the old packing plants had them on the hoof for a long time before they got into the holding pens. And then they have a holding process that evidently calms them down. And then they move them into another area and on from there. Interesting.
It's going to be a great project, 1,100 total employees and that's, that's great for our area. And also talked about CF going down to 700 permanent full-time jobs, which is something some people lose sight of because they see, oh, we're losing the 2,000 workers that have been in capacity. Well, 700 permanent full-time jobs will be there. And then also wanted to mention, as far as the initiative liaisons and to the Chamber Supervisor Ung and myself, met last week with Dan Moore from the city council, Marty Doherty and Renee Billings, as well as Chris McGowan and Barbara Slonaker on the Ag Expo Center. And our role was to gather information and to do some of the due diligence that we had mentioned earlier on. We learned some things and then we left wanting some further details as well. But right now, that 70, $72 million potential reinvestment, 25-acre district, potentially could have up to $14 million from the state. And we all know the IEDA asked the county to participate. We talked to them about some of the limitations that we mentioned earlier in this meeting on local option sales tax being dedicated for rural economic development. We cannot currently TIF in that area, it's in a city TIF right now. And Iowa code's pretty clear that one TIF cannot feed another TIF area. And it doesn't sound like there's any impetus to retire that TIF on the city's part. And so then we're, we're down to some limitations. We also asked some hard questions and I think some due diligent questions on the number of hotels, the private management or a management group that would be in charge of an ag and expo center. And have asked that eventually that presentation needs to be made back to the board so that we make sure that we're being a potential partner, but we're also doing it well with finite responsible fiduciary exercisers of taxpayer dollars. So just wanted to update the board as to that.
Just a note for Karen regarding the calendar. The next Sioux Rivers meeting on the 24th, the time is back to the normal 1:30. So I just noticed it's 11 on here. Mark and I did have a Sioux Rivers meeting yesterday, but I'm not sure I want to get into it and ruin the levity in the room.
Good.
Last one is, we had a discussion today with the sheriff's office on CBM. Just very quick update that they are most currently looking at the clerk of court space for potential walk-in coolers and storage and the LEC's jail kitchen and are very excited about the potential for that space. Obviously, needs to be explored further, but there is great potential there and so we'll look to that. 24/7 is most likely dead, according to the lead lobbyist, MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, doesn't like the bill. So, Des Moines, where all good legislation goes to die. So with that, that's all I, all I have.
Move to adjourn. I have a question for you.